All right, let's rock and roll. So I'm gonna call this committee of the whole of the Springfield City Council to order. Today is Wednesday, May 21st, time is 5 o'clock. This is our fourth budget meeting, our third budget hearing. And we have 11 departments to get through today. So we're gonna get started right away. Joined by my colleagues, councilors Walsh and Delgado. Thank you for being here, councilors. And our first department on the agenda is Parks Department. So Parks Department in our books is page 325. And that department has an gain of one FTE and an overall reduction of 1% in the budget. Mr. Ash?
Thank you, Mr. President, councilors. As you just said, that's our proposed budget. This year's 12,720,776 represents a cut of just over 1%. Majority of that cut, Mr. President, is absorbed in our water and sewer accounts, just under $200,000. So the cut isn't gonna drastically affect our services or anything like that with those more parks or golf courses or anything. So we're we're closely with the capital and finance department to ensure that we had the cuts that they were looking for. And also, they worked with us to make sure that they weren't gonna be made.
Thank you. We're also joined by councilors Allen and Davolo. Any questions for the Parks Department? One, Councilor Allen?
Do we need microphones?
No, it picks it up. It's in the sky. See that? That's the moment.
Nice, thank you. That in the budget?
That was another budget. That's a separate budget.
So Tom, we have CPA projects, which I know a lot of them get approved and then moved to you. How does the budget dollars work?
So the maximum allotment is $250,000. So groups have come and asked for more than that, but then it's cut to no more than $250,000. And so we work within those.
So if it's $250,000, it moves from the CPA budget to you?
If it's a park project.
If it's a park?
Yeah.
And then you you work on it, spend the whole amount or spend most of it, and do they go back?
Correct. There have been times even recently that we've gone over a little bit and you can't push point. It's the headboard, the mayor's office, or if it's a low number, it make the case that it's, you know, it's necessary to finish off the project.
Very good.
The accounts are reconciled at the end and then it's put back or then as soon as they award the 250, then controls will set up the account, put the money in there for the park department.
A lot of stuff happens behind the scenes.
Yeah. And then they reconcile. Sometimes they go over and sometimes they go under.
Like venture bond a year ago.
Yep.
That was one that was, there was money, then there wasn't money and.
We scrapped it anyway.
We scrapped it.
Yeah.
Councilor Delgado?
Thank you, Mr. President. Threw me off because we're in this room.
Well, we couldn't get focused today. That's why we had to come in.
Just a few questions. First of all, just continuing compliments on a lot of the work that's been done in a lot of the parks. Seeing a lot of folks utilizing, especially the tennis courts and a lot of the areas. So and I know this has already been done years ago, but it still throws me off how beautiful the Echoes building is when I think about what that building looked like when I was a kid and what it is now, like completely, completely different. So I'm just excited for the for the kids to be able to use that facility. Speaking about kids, I'm just kind of curious about youth youth summer jobs. I get a lot of questions about that. And I just wanted to know and how that's funded and whatnot.
So that's funded out of, in part, through CDBG and also some funds from our general fund. And so for our recreation, summer jobs, also, we have 52 positions. Those are teachers, teachers aides, directors, head rec leaders, lifeguards, things like that. And so we are aggressive in going out and recruiting, letting pretend every engagement that we can send staff and talk about programs and the jobs that are available. So we've it's a really robust kind of an effort to do it. And so we were never at a shortage for.
Yeah. Are those already kind of in the process now?
Very much so, yeah.
Okay. You know, because a lot of people ask about those and I just was curious, you know, how many kids, how many opportunities there are.
So there's about 87 just in those programs, so.
Cool. And then I just had one quick question about the golf courses and Sea Arena. Because I thought I maybe I'm not finding it through. So essentially, those, the revenues cover the expenses on those?
Correct. And in fact, we're gonna see an increase at Sea Arena this year of about $25,000. You know, so it covers the cost in golf. Someone like, yes.
So is it kind of just like, just covers it? Do we make any extra on it from the car expenses?
Not a, not a, not a ton, but it's covered.
All right. Thought I saw something here, but I'm not finding it. It was interesting because I was looking at FY24 actuals and I know FY25 hasn't finished. We have the adopted. Recommended. But it's tough to see, like, we see the actuals, but we don't see what we adopted and what like the changes are here over here. So so I was just curious about the operations there.
So so the FY24, our revenue was 1,118,736 at Franconia for a total of $213,000.
All right. No, I was, I was just wanting to make sure that like the expenses there are covered by them, I mean, that we're generating.
Yeah. And we're hopeful that the weather changed a little bit, so. See, because we went to a new online system this year and we are hoping to realize some savings for that.
Right. Councilor Walsh?
I just found the, thank you, Mr. President, and it's nice to see everybody from the Park Department again today. It's, it's not as cold here in my room as it was at the press conference. So this is what I'm, this is what I'm on Zoom. But I did have a few questions. I know, Director, you said that the 1% cut does not impact personnel, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. But in your wish list, is there more personnel that you're looking for? Or do you have adequate people, you know, to keep the parks and the pools and everything going?
We do, Matt, Councilor, and like I said, I don't know if you were on yet, but majority of those cuts were in water and sewer and landscape services, which those cuts we can absorb. We can work with that. We work closely with finance to to ensure that we can. And so we're in good shape. We've got four or five open positions right now on the park side, which a couple we're interviewing for right now and a couple just were posted. So it's always gonna be that that kind of turnover. So we're in a good shape from employment standpoint.
Yeah. And speaking of employment, I know last year you had a big problem with lifeguards. Is that, is that true for this year?
No, I think we're in good shape. Joe Federico has, has been on top of it. And knowing we had a problem last year, he got it, you know, after it a little bit earlier. So we're gonna be in good shape.
Okay, perfect. Well, you know, I hate to see any kind of cut to the Park Department because it is one that most constituents relate to and use and enjoy. So happy to support your budget.
Thank you, Colonel Walsh. Councilor Davola?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good to see you, Tommy and Pete. Tommy, great job today during the press conference. I think you facilitated the park for the press conference for the X project. Very good job. But tell me a quick question, more of a technical question. I did notice that your department was awarded a really $60,000 CPA money for the bench, Star Wars, Howard Stern Square project. Is that money really factored into this budget or is that extra money coming in?
That's wholly separate. That's CPA funded position. This doesn't affect our bottom line at all.
Okay, good, good. Excellent. Do you have a timeline on that project at all?
CPA is working directly with the contractor. CPA.
Yeah.
They're working directly with the contractor. So the contractor is Marroy's Construction. So they're, they're a reputable group recommended by Dr. Kerrigan. And so we're anticipating they'll do a good job there.
Good. I was, I was glad to see that that money was awarded because I know that was a little contagious over the summer. And so, excellent. And you say you're comfortable with what you have. You should be in good shape, you think?
I think we will, yes.
All right. Thank you so much, Tommy. Thank you for your work. Thank you guys. God bless.
Thank you, Councilor Davola. Okay, any other councilors for Parks?
Tom, what pools do we have?
We have Arena and Forest Park.
Out one, Forest Park Outdoors.
Arena and indoors.
Those as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Little star. And Camp Star.
Oh, Sarah and Angelina, great.
Any other questions from councilors?
Speaking of pools, when will they open?
July 1st.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. I think that'll do it for Parks. Thank you, Mr. Ash. Next is Facilities Management. Page 339 in your book. And we've got a level amount of FTEs, a 1% budget increase. Mr. Ash, Mr. Kerrigan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Our proposed budget is $4,459,944. That's an increase of $43,152, predominantly in salaries and wages and also snowmobile services, which, as you all know, we had a difficult past. We certainly both side city and municipal. So that's, that's the majority where those came from.
Any questions regarding facilities?
Is there a?
Councilor Allen, yeah.
Thank you. You seem very conversant on the whole environmentally lead product, lead buildings and all that stuff. Do we have a goal of aiming for so many of our, all the new ones I know have a certification, but do we retrofit? Or do we go back and try to, is there any, is there any value in that?
So what I could tell you is that from our perspective in facilities, whenever we're approached with a project, whenever we receive a project, whenever we consider a project, right, we're looking, we're, that's an important element to that design process. So we're asking our designers to integrate elements of sustainability into all projects. Particularly through the ESCO. The ESCO is probably the largest source that our department directly oversees, where there is a holistic approach to sustainability. We're doing, say, an HVAC project, right, to add air conditioning to a school. We're also looking at air sealing. We're also looking at the electrical service to look at potential solar. I know that when Capital Asset Construction does a roof project, the building code now requires them to make provisions for solar. So it's happening. Obviously, it's a rate, there's a rate of attrition, right, that makes that, makes that difficult. It ultimately does, does come down to, you know, total project funding on the capital level. So, yeah, we certainly look at it and try to factor in whenever, wherever we can.
And all our new constructions, those leave certified or we get to leave, you know, new buildings, right?
Sure.
Is that? Great question for Pete, but yes.
And that's a question for Pete, gotcha.
All right. Any other questions for facilities?
I'll just leave you with one, with one comment. In terms of work orders that facilities gets throughout the year, John's anticipating absolutely staff plans for 6,000 work orders to finish fiscal '26. So it's a busy staff and as is our staff and very fortunate to have.
It seems to be a coming field because I just had a student who's transferring out of Springfield College. I had her in class. And she's going to MS. There's some, they have a major on all this stuff. Didn't know if you knew that or if that's a.
Well, that, I could tell you that, you know, getting good plumbers and electricians and all of the trades is also an area that you have to, I think as a society, focus on a little bit more.
I mean, 6,000, that's, that's over 16 requests a day, every day, assuming there's no weekends or holidays, 365 days a year. That's a lot.
Yes, you can get a bump up to 15.
No question. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so next is DPW. Somebody he drags the goalie in here for us, please.
Thank you, that's a good shit.
All right. Second, you're not speaking remotely. Can you please mute? Sounds like there's some background noise. I can't sure.
It's a low bar.
I can't. I don't know why. I don't have my usual powers here. Okay, Mr. Signoli.
You don't have your usual powers.
No, I don't have my full powers. I've diminished powers here. So this is DPW, Department of Public Works, page 265 in your books. A no increase in FTEs and budget increase overall of 4.7%. Mr. Signoli?
Beautiful. Thank you, Councilor Fenton and all the councilors here. Just to go through our information. We have 132 total full-time employees. We have had six intern positions. One of the positions that is being eliminated in our, in our budget is gonna be one intern position. We have 81 total employees in general fund and 56 employees inside of the enterprise fund. For our budgets for this year, as you mentioned, inside the general fund, our personal services is going up a little bit over 5%. And in the enterprise fund, our personal services are going up a little bit over 5%. Our departments settled contracts earlier this fiscal year. So we are basically looking at four, or excuse me, two plus two at a minimum from an increase. Plus, we had a number of stipends that we have that have been increased as part of the contract negotiations. So we have been level, level funded with regard to number of employees. Everything in there for increase has just been all contractual. Inside of the general fund, we're increasing our OTPS by about 4%. And most of those are all fixed costs. We have contracts with DigSafe, software, GPS, our cartograph mixes that we deal with, as well as some utilities. And in enterprise fund, we are looking at a about almost 500,000 increase and tests and inspections that we have to do on all of our landfills. And just for everybody's information, we take care of Bondi Island. We also take care of the land, the closed landfill that is at Mercy Hospital. And we have work associated with the closed landfill on Cottage Street. Hazardous waste has been increased. Recycling has gone up 50,000 per contract. Trash has gone up 60,000 per contract. And inside of the enterprise fund, we also include items such as insurance and workman's comp that are usually not covered in any other department, just inside of enterprise fund to capture it. So those items have gone up as well. So from a budget standpoint, we are looking at about a 4.9% increase overall. The overall budget between the two departments is about $27.5 million. And the, the budget as presented back to the department is, everything's in there that we can live with. Nothing's been cut. So I do not see any issues moving on. With regard to revenue, we are bringing in about $5.9 million, almost $6 million in revenue. Obviously, a large portion of that is the trash fee. But inside of the general fund, we are bringing in a little bit over 400,000, mostly with regard to permits that we process in the city for construction activities, which has been extremely healthy. So that number's gone up. And in the enterprise fund, we have almost a half million dollars in revenue for our recycling that we're doing. The line item is a little bit over 1 million. So we're 1.1 million, excuse me. So we are still paying for, to get rid of recycling, but we're doing really well on revenue coming back in. Just a few of the highlights from the department. We did all new contracts with Ask Me, UpC and UFCW. We've updated all of our solid waste ordinances. Court Square itself is complete. There is additional work going on. We've activated a number of design projects in the city and construction projects. Obviously, we had a groundbreaking city for the X, but we've had a number of other projects. We completed last year $9 million worth of roadway, private roads and municipal parking lots for paving. We did about six crosswalk projects that have beacons. Construction with regard to Tapley Street, St. James Avenue Roundabout is nearing completion. We are starting Dwight Street Corridor. We are starting Union Station re-greening. We've done new contracts for recycling our mattresses. We've started a new contract for design of the land side of Riverfront Park. But really, the, a lot of the stuff that we've been dealing with is Mass DOT has initiated about 14 projects, 15 projects in the city of Springfield, including a New North End Bridge, Armory Street, Liberty Street Rotary, St. James Avenue Railroad Bridge, St. James Avenue over 291, Tapley Street over 291, the Putts Bridge, which is the bridge of Route 21 into Ludlow, is gonna be completely replaced. Karoo Street, Dwight Street, those are just a handful of the projects that we're dealing with. And putting together our budget, we are looking at long-term issues with regard to, A, our budget this year and moving forward over the years. As I have said myself ad nauseam in talking about residency, it has had a, an extreme negative impact on my department and will continue to have that. Solid waste collection, we are only one of 12 communities now in the state that pick up our own trash. And there was, in the news the past few weeks, if you've seen it, South, Southwick? Or Westfield?
Westfield.
Westfield is privatizing and going to 275, $65 a year on theirs.
Say that again?
They had, they had a fee, I want to say it was 50 or 60 bucks.
They had a fee of 85 and they're going to 265. They already voted it.
Yeah.
What's our fee?
90.
When's the last time we went up on the fee?
We, we haven't. We went down. It started at 125.
It was this senior discount on the fee?
40 bucks down to 50. So it's a good, it's a good program.
In this year? I mean, really?
I would have put it in here.
Keep going, keep going. I'll let you finish.
Things such as traffic signal maintenance, trying to find, and it's not just DPW, a lot of departments are finding it. Certain very, very technical jobs are getting very hard to find. We're trying to work through land next door to us for possible purchase for a storage facility. And we will, for the end of the coming fiscal year, next June, we're gonna be starting in November, we will be having all new contracts for trash, bulk recycling. We are in the process of renegotiating one for condo units in the city. And the, I'm just trying to think if there was anything else that I wanted to add. We went through and looked at a whole host of scenarios, as we do every year for the mayor for cuts. And we presented them, wish list. We also, as a lot of departments do, probably between us and facilities are the most, spend a lot of effort on events throughout the city that we do not get paid for, whether it's Spirit of Springfield or some of the events that are going on minimally. We just had the pancake breakfast. We will have the Fourth of July. We have Jazz and Roots, Jazz and Roots Pride Parade, the Italian Fest. I don't miss it one. Oh, Iron Man, Iron Man. So, you know, some of these things we're charging for, but there, there's a lot of events. From a DPW perspective, one of the things that's really changed for events is security. So when we have Fourth of July right now and streets are closed in downtown, they're not closed with horses, they're closed with trucks. So there are people in trucks blocking streets. We have now started that for the pancake breakfast. And we will probably be doing it for a number of other events throughout the city. And obviously, we also provide services for bright nights, setting out cones, et cetera.
So our, that's for anti-terrorism.
Yes, yeah. All the, the anti-terrorism stuff is now starting to heat up. And for a couple of different reasons. Number one, obviously, events have happened all over the country. But number two, we are receiving through the police department, when I say we, the city, they're receiving a lot of grants that now are requiring us for certain events to make sure that areas are protected. And we always kind of laughed a little bit. It was like, hey, we're protecting everybody for the Fourth of July. But we put 5,000 people on Main Street for the, for the pancake breakfast with, you know, two horses. And so, you know, those things have, those things have changed a little bit. So it's a little bit of a dynamic for, for some of the events. And I think it will, will continue to happen for a lot of the events. So that's kind of a general overview of the department, our budget in general. I'll never say I'm happy, these two over here. But everything, basically, everything we need to continue the services that we have is in the budget. And for us to be able to continue, there's no, any reduction in services that we are seeing. Our continued fight at this point is basically person.
Well, we hope you're happy. 4.7% impact.
I was gonna say.
Because I wanted to see when she was gonna.
Well, I tried still and I couldn't. We laughed the whole time.
We're, you know, with everything that we put in.
Councilors, questions for DPW? Councilor Davola?
Thank you. Well, good to see you again, Chris. Very good job today, my friend.
Thank you.
On the project, ex-project, press conference. So Chris, I ever heard you say that, I believe you said the overall increase is 4.7%?
For, for both general fund and enterprise fund, the total increase is about 4.9%.
And the main drivers behind that is the labor contract?
Labor contracts, every, in our department, for this year over last year is 4%. We settled the contracts early in this year. So the 2% was for this year, but it wasn't in the budget. So next year, when it comes in, it's basically a 4%, 4% increase for, for personnel.
Got you. And now the enterprise fund, OTPS is going up 4.8 or $487,000. Is that the tipping fee?
That is a combination of the tipping fee for recycling and trash, increase for hazardous wastes, increase for tests and inspections. The requirements for DEP, EPA have gone through the roof. But also, inside of the enterprise fund, we have to have workman's comp, insurance, retirement as part of our budget, where no, I don't think any other department has those. That doesn't have an enterprise fund because we have to capture all the costs. So those numbers, where those are citywide, those are under Bill, right, under Bill's budget? Like the workman's comp, all that stuff is under for the entire city. But we pull that out. So that number, you know, we're going up 117,000 in insurance and workman's comp, 100,000, so.
Okay. Now, on page 268, Chris, says trash fee, $3.1 million. There says trash lien, trash lien, $560,000. Where is the, where is the trash lien?
No, I got, I just, I just want to find my.
I just don't know where that is.
The revenue. Inside of the enterprise fund, when trash fees are not paid and penalties and interest are placed on that. And also, at certain points, we also place liens, we being the city, place liens on residents Place liens on uh residents who have not paid their trash bill, I wanna say it's for two years. Uh liens are placed, and then when we are collected, it's placed through taxes. So that money that comes in goes to that line items for penalties, interest, liens, et cetera.
There's a lot of money now.
It is, it is, we we. In the end, we have a very, very good collection rate, um we're ninety something percent uh.
But we gotta wait over over here to collect it, right?
In some cases with some of them, yeah, yeah, because people don't pay trash fee for whatever reason, whether they moved or, you know, we're we're chasing them down. That aspect of the collection um is actually done through our collections department. Um so that, yeah, the revenue there and that number that we've had in there, it's probably been in that budget, that number has been in there. Probably the same number for at least five or six years.
Yeah, one last question, Chris, your curiosity, I was looking here for um maybe it's buried somewhere. The snow budget.
Yeah.
Is the where where exactly is that?
The snow and ice is in the general fund, it is. Grab mine here. Um the snow and ice budget for the city is one point five nine one million. Uh let me put it up a ready one here, that number. Yeah, and that number has been the same number probably for the last uh at least fifteen years that I've been with the city. The number um uh when based upon deficit spending in the state level. Um we are allowed to deficit spend, if you increase the budget number. You then have to deal with, I guess, the best, the engineering term is bullshit at the state level. That with regard to um funding, deficit spending, uh et cetera. So we stay at one point five nine, this year, we are looking at deficit this current fiscal year. We're looking at deficit spending of about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. But we haven't had, we hadn't had deficit spending, I think, since nineteen? Yeah, I think it was two thousand and nineteen was the last time we had deficit.
So we're being the ballpark of one point five.
Yeah.
Millions.
Yeah.
Overall.
And a major, the major spending this year was manpower and salt. We spent a lot of money on salt, spent a lot of money on manpower, putting salt down around the city. Um because we had a lot of events, we had four plowing events, but we probably had twenty sanding and salting events. Uh so when we have a rain event or a a thawing event during the day. We are out at night with fifteen trucks or so doing sanding and salting.
I'm just wondering with the cost of everything going on.
Yeah.
I I'd be surprised if we, it's still three hundred thousand approximately, I wouldn't be surprised if it was a little higher, I hope not.
I I hope so, I hope so too, we have less trucks, um but this year. Um we we spent a lot more on salt overall and a lot more on our manpower. Uh that we have, because that's tracked separately within that uh within that division as well.
Okay. All right, Chris, thank you.
Thank you.
Just FYI, I will be coming to the council for free cash to cover that deficit, so now everyone knows about.
We get a list of like, just like you want a list from Chris on all the and the departments on the trucks and all that, can we get a list of the expectations of?
Sure, free cash, yeah, because I do have a couple that we're gonna have to come for you in June.
You have many more?
Um I just had a quick question, um. We're busy, um a lot of great projects out there, um I did see the highlight of the seventy percent streetlights to LED.
Yes, yes, I I forgot to mention that.
I was just curious about, like, have we seen any reduction, because the expense for went up. But we have.
The.
On the electricity lights.
The we pay ever source for light. And that includes use of electricity, maintenance, installation, cost for installation. And cost for long-term maintenance. When we go to LED lights, LED, we're paying basically the exact same thing than we were paying before. The difference is the energy cost is lower, but the initial replacement cost is higher and the maintenance cost is higher. So on uh LED lights that are going in in the city, when a light used to burn out. You get replaceable, on an LED, it's the entire fixture. So that instead of replacing it with a, I'm gonna throw a number, a ten dollar bulb, you're replacing it with a two hundred and fifty dollar or three hundred dollar fixture. As we.
Do those lights, are they supposed to last?
They are supposed to last longer, they have of when we were looking into it, everybody was telling me seven years. Uh that's seven year um warranties on that, so. One of the things that I think will happen, number one, we're gonna have less lights in general out. Um and of what I've seen for the LEDs in the city, when LEDs start to go, they flash a lot, almost like a strobe light. And they are extremely irritating.
Yeah, one on Woffen, right?
Yeah.
I'm gonna go pull it out tonight.
We had one at the X and and so that, so what we are working with with them is that if we're starting to see. Less need for replacement, the less need for uh so we can we can get our maintenance and stuff to come down a little bit. And that would be something that we would do through ever sort with the DPU, because their rate for that is set statewide. So it's not like they have a rate for Springfield and a different one for West Springfield, it's set statewide for the type of fixtures.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Allen.
And Chris, you and I hosted these food truck meetings in the last few months. And you were writing up a document with proposed changes, et cetera. Does what impact does that have, I not knowing the direction of the document, we haven't reviewed it, but.
Yeah.
What does it mean to your budget?
It really doesn't mean anything to our budget, uh you know, we got a few more dollars for the permit. Uh because the responsibilities, you know, we'll process the permits, the responsibility for enforcement will remain the same. So right now, something that's on private property, you know, is code ordinance, um et cetera, and you know, police fire on that. And we do the stuff on the public way, so. Uh and what Councilor Allen was talking about is we're actually looking at modifying the ordinance. Because right now, there's really not a lot of control of food trucks on private property. Um and what they're doing, when they're doing it, and how they're doing it, so we had a pretty tight reg on the uh right-of-way food trucks. So we're trying to write it up so that we control the process of somebody getting a permit even to be on private property. And be able to enforce rules and regs in the ordinance and, you know, noise ordinances, location. Um you know, so we've had a number of them around the city, so from us, other than just having to process some more permits, it's not gonna be a big deal.
You're good. Counselor Dabla. Oh, Counselor Walsh?
Chris, I wanted to ask you about uh recycling, in the past, you've had a a a plan to change. The recycling schedules or to have more barrels, is that something you're still thinking about?
Right now, we have no chain, no plans to change uh trash or recycling, a number of years ago, the DEP. Uh this is about six, seven years ago, the DEP was pushing us to reduce the amount of trash. Uh and pushing more into recycling, and what we were possibly looking at at that time was going to a smaller trash barrel.
I I thought I remembered something about.
Yeah, DEP has since changed that, and now still pushing more recycling, but the um. The mandate, uh what was it, the twenty by thirty? That was, it was, so they wanted you to reduce your trash by twenty percent by twenty thirty, that ain't gonna happen. Um and basically, they've thrown that away, we are staying with the ninety-five gallon barrels. Knowing the BS that every other community has gone through with the thirty gallon, thirty-five gallons, you know, I see it in East Long Meadow, you see it in Chicagee. Um and, you know, our uh trash volume has been relatively steady. Over the last five, six years, it peaked uh during the beginning of COVID. Uh but it's been very good, so we have no plans on changing anything with recycling. Within the regs, we did put stuff in there for people to request second recycle barrels, second trash barrels. Uh to hopefully reduce illegal dumping around the city as well.
So, and I have I have one more question, I'm I'm wondering what, has there been any impact to the changes? The city council made in the solid waste ordinances, I know in particular, I'm I'm wondering about mattresses, has anything improved in that area because of our ordinance?
Uh when we, when we change the uh cost, we have started to see a slow drop. In the number of mattresses that we're picking up, and just for everybody's purposes, we used to pick up about twenty-five hundred a year, and then all of a sudden, when. The recycling came up, we went to seventy-five hundred, simply because we were the cheapest around. Uh I we and and I probably stopped trash service for half dozen, well, probably. Half dozen entities, probably twenty or so uh addresses, because in my opinion, they were bringing stuff from out of town. So that has kind of stopped a little bit, uh and the other regulations that we we modified were. Um more procedural, uh but we've seen a slight reduction in the mattresses um over the last few months. We didn't start charging the sixteen dollars until February. So I'm hoping that as we get through the next months, we'll start to, we'll start to have a little bit better of an idea overall.
Last question, how long can uh something stay on the tree belt if you're trying to get rid of it?
Per the ordinance, we uh we put uh, we put in forty-eight hours. Um and that was, the that issue came up because there's been just been a huge thing on social media. Of people putting. Their own junk out on the tree belt and saying, come one, come all. And we were getting a ton of complaints around the city of people. And I saw it on on Dwight Road, you know, somebody puts out a nineteen seventies big velvet couch with a sign that says free. And then it rains for three days and it's still sitting there. So what we've been doing is we give them forty-eight hours with code, they'll contact us. We're not going after people at forty-eight hours, you know, when stuff sits there for five, six days, then code notifies them. And code, when they notify you on something like that, they don't give you a ticket right away. You get notified that, hey, you get one day, five day, ten days to get rid of this thing. Um so that that's been a big thing around the city, because um all the uh social media websites have, you know. You have something you wanna get rid of, you put it on the tree belt, and unfortunately, in a lot of cases, it just sits there, so. Uh we've been trying to at least get people to get it back off the tree belt and get rid of it.
Thank you.
Uh I have a couple of questions, so Chris, you said no interest currently in shrinking the size of the trash barrels, you don't think that that'll save us?
No, no.
Cycling program, it used to save us money, now it costs us money.
Yeah.
Does it, like, if you if you put a pound of trash in the green barrel, and then you put a pound of recycling in the blue barrel. Are they ultimately costing us the same amount now to get rid of?
Sure I do this right, uh. We, for this coming fiscal year. I got the right number here.
Why are you looking that up? It used to be that a pound of materials, cardboard in the blue barrel would generate some. Although nominal, some revenue to the city.
What we are doing.
Days are gone.
Well, yes and no, we are paying a hundred and uh a hundred and forty-four dollars and fifteen cents a ton. To get rid of recycling material. Our line item budget for that is one point one million. Trash, we are paying one fif, we will be paying a hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-one cents. And because of the tonnage, we're paying about four point five million. Now, on the revenue side.
Okay, if I, if you said that correctly, then it's costing us more to get rid of the recycling.
More to get rid of recycling, however, on the recycling in our budget this year. Uh we're probably looking at about a half million dollars worth of revenue.
But that's still not gonna break.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't break even, it doesn't break even, uh however. One of the things that we did, when we negotiated our uh and Greg had was very instrumental in that. We are getting more money for our recycled materials than anybody around uh by, I'm gonna, by double, probably.
Sure.
The money that the the they, we, communities around here elected to go with the DEP. And we're one of the few communities that has single stream.
Yeah.
And when they did it, they were looking at dual stream, and the cost for for trash. And then looking at recycling was ridiculous. We went out to bid for recycling, negotiated with a number of different people. And uh the only thing that I don't like right now is the negotiated year-to-year cost increases. Because when we were doing that the last time, we were in COVID, and the big problem was transportation. Uh so I'm hoping that when we do it again next time, we'll have a little bit more control over the year-to-year.
Don't a lot of the recycled materials end up in the landfill anyway now these days?
Virtually, well, let me put it this way, I'm gonna say virtually zero. In order for any recycling material to get into a landfill, you have to have special approval from the DEP. If it is recyclable material, nothing, our stuff is going god knows where. And when I say god knows where, because it's all split up and it, you know, glass goes here, glass that goes there, um you know, it goes all over the place. Material going into the landfill that is recyclable is a one hundred percent no-no. Uh you have to basically petition, uh communities have to petition the DEP to get that. And around the state, there's a lot of landfills that were that aren't taking ash, it's like they're burying stuff and you just lose capacity, but.
I guess getting to the heart of what I'm getting at here is sort of, so recycling costs us more now than trash, basically. And used to be, yeah, so it used to be that the, well, and even if you take into consideration how much they're giving us back, it's still per ton more.
Yeah.
It's not costing net more, but it's per ton more.
Right.
So, one of the original motivations for single-stream recycling was the environment, and another was the pocketbook. The pocketbook explanation is no longer the case, so, I mean. How much environmental impact is really being realized as a result of our recycling program, and is it worth the extra? Cost?
I say absolutely, if we went to back to dual stream, number one, I think there would be a revolt from the residents. Um because now.
When you say dual stream, you mean the blue barrels where people had to separate paper?
You have to, you then have to separate everything.
Yeah.
The cost for that with the state was.
It's it's over a hundred, I mean, it's less than, it's less than single stream, but it's marginally less at this point, it used to be, it used to be free years ago.
It was free, and it's 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 marginally less.
China shut down their their markets, so when they shut down their end markets for recyclables, that just spiked the cost. And they passed those processing costs on.
And that's not getting any better in twenty twenty-five. But I guess, you know, let me just get right to it, like, you know, other communities don't have a recycling program at all.
Well, some of them don't, they just have, uh you know, um use Ludlow, they have a transfer station, you bring your stuff, yeah.
So. I guess, you know, bad budget times coming ahead, like, you know. And I was a big proponent of single-stream recycling when it first came out, and the pilot program and the implementation after that, and. Alan, your predecessor, I'm just saying that, you know, for the future, we all have to be aware that the that the prior. The prior terms have changed, and the analysis has flipped on its head, it's now more expensive to recycle than not. And um. It's something we gotta look at, that's that's my only point, I don't have a suggestion right now, I'm just pointing that out.
Only item that I would add to it is that the revenue side of dual stream. Uh is not close to what we are getting. So we would be getting.
Dual stream, I'm talking about getting rid of it altogether, and just saying, you know, you got stuff to recycle and. You know, put your stuff that you're supposed to put in the green barrel, otherwise, I mean, it's it's a, it's a, it's a seven-figure cost.
It is.
It's a seven-figure cost, and it's not saving us anything, and, you know, I don't know, I guess we'd have to do a study on what the environmental impact is, I'm sure there's some there.
Well, you got the environmental, then you have the legal side, because recycling is mandatory.
I get it.
So.
Recycling is mandatory, but not for the city to do, a city to offer a program, they could bring it to Bondi's.
Uh no, because we don't process it at Bondi's, we process, our recycling is processed up on Tremont Street in New York. Off of Page Boulevard.
Well, I got no proposal today, I'm just pointing out that it's interesting.
It's been, it's been, over X amount of years, it's been frustrating, because as Greg said, we pay zero.
Yeah.
Now it's just.
Okay, last question is regarding the uh new site on Tapley Street. What is going on with that since we've taken?
The land next door.
Yeah.
The land next door, we took the rear parcel of it that we had been leasing. We are now in the process and have been of trying to negotiate a purchase slash taking of the property.
Right.
The property is empty.
Yeah.
Uh there is no tenant in there, there is a lawsuit between the owner and the tenant.
Yeah.
Right now, we are peripherally involved with it, the problem.
City been named as a defendant?
We're involved with it, that they've they've been trying to come after us for different things, we have, I'm I'm actually Eddie Bakula is is running that. We have, in my opinion, absolutely zero liability, they're going after each other. For, and there's a lot of shady stuff that's happened in the background, but for us, the value. The value of that property right now is somewhere between one point six and two million dollars.
The property we don't currently.
That we that we don't currently own. The value that the owners took on it from a mortgage standpoint is three point six.
Yeah.
So everybody's trying to get out of the mortgage at three point six. We're not paying three point six. There is no way on God's earth that we're gonna pay three point six for that parcel uh to help a bank, to help the owner, to help whatever. You know, you get a mortgage for double what the value of your property is. They bought it for one point seven technically. But their mortgage is three point five, so everybody's trying to recover the mortgage. So my opinion and our legal opinion at this point is we're kind of sitting because at a certain point, the bank has to take it. Because they haven't, nobody's paying mortgage, nobody's paying anything. And when the bank takes it, we can then. Go in if we so desire an eminent domain.
Meanwhile, you have unimpeded access to the back.
To the back, we have no issue with that. Everything's working fine.
We get the building. Right now, we've got the back. Maybe we've got some culpability there. We think not. They allege we do. They always allege.
Everybody does. You know how lawyers are.
Oh, I do. And uh, all right. So thank you for indulging me. That was a lot more than usual, Council of Dublin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh Chris, a follow-up question from Council Allen's um food truck. Um in your opinion, why is it, why is it that it appears that? The food trucks in the city are tended to to gather in private property.
Because there's no regulation that controls them.
Right.
But how but how is that, how, I'm just trying to think, this could possibly impact the revenue as well because they have to pay a fee to be on the street.
Right.
Um. There's no regulation, I get it, but why, I just tried to figure out. Why is that? Because I I know there's no regulation that that.
Right. And that's what we're really trying to do.
What is it that business-wise or that is encouraging them to to con- conglomerate in private property?
Well, as as an example, I'm gonna use Counselor Allen's ward. Um at the end of Island Pond, uh on Island Pond Road, at the end of Surrey Road, there's a food truck there that was operating till three in the morning. In for, in what I call the old Dairy Mart. They operate at three in the morning. And what they have for power is they plug into the building, they have cords running through the parking lot. Then they have music, then they have light, and literally a hundred feet away is a house, and across the street is a house. Um the one on Allen Street is kind of the same thing. You got houses behind it. So the regulation and the uh, I'm gonna say the complaints we've been dealing with are more residential property. People complaining about noise, people complaining about cars. Um and the one on Island Pond Road as an example. Everybody comes out of Nathan Bill's restaurant that, you know, at two in the morning, they, now all of a sudden you got sixty cars over there.
You're hungry.
Playing music and, you know, people hanging around. So what we are trying to do is is create ordinances around them on private property. So that they're controlled, so that, you know, they can only be in a certain spot. They can't, you know, um. They can't be so close to to residential property, and that's the stuff that we're working through right now.
I know in my own district, uh in the food zone area, there has been, I was one there for, there was one truck there for years.
Yep.
Suddenly, I got like three or four.
Now there's three or four.
And what is happening now is it's it's a pretty busy place.
Yeah.
And what is happening is starting to impede traffic.
Absolutely.
Still go through.
Absolutely.
But I know I found myself sometimes like, what the heck's going on here? And then you got people, you got grandma coming out with the with a grocery cart, you got mom coming out with a chi- with a child with a grocery cart. Nobody's gonna hear me. And so.
Residential, right across the street.
Residential, right across the street. So, absolutely. Something that, please let me know.
Yeah, what we're.
Very interested.
We had a couple of meetings in January and.
We've had a couple of meetings, and what what our hope was is that when we as a group are happy with it, we're gonna have a subcommittee meeting. Um uh and then, you know, hopefully be able to present it to the to the council as an ordinance modification.
Can can you guys keep me updated on that? Cause I, so I I hear all the arguments around the timing and whatever. But I also want to like be mindful, there's a lot of small businesses. That are involved in there, and there are a lot of folks that I know that are in that. And so I wanna make sure that it's being fair. Right? Cause I think about how many years ago on Worthen Street when we had the hot dog vendor fight. You know, uh so I just wanna make sure that we're being fair, because a lot of these folks, you know, some of these, this is their livelihood and tools. And so I wanna be fair to both the residents and the small businesses. So, and not not to, this is a budget meeting, we could talk about that after.
All right. Anybody else on D P W?
The only thing I, if I get this follow-up on your recycling thing. Recycling got worse. We couldn't ship it to China and all that stuff during COVID.
The cost.
The cost, but then it started to get better.
It is.
It was starting to have a little revenue again.
And I hate to say COVID helped, because during COVID, there wasn't manufacturing of raw material. And the only way to get material was to use recycling. So the cost for the recycling material or the money that we were receiving. Went up dramatically because that was the only way you could get material. And right now, cardboard, certain types of plastic. Um are excellent because the recycling businesses around the country. Get tax credits if they're using recycled materials, so that that's continuing. Uh but things like glass, you can't get rid of glass anywhere. It's going on Ohio, you know. I don't know if it just stays on a train and goes around the country, but there's certain things you can't get rid of. There was one entity that was in Milford, Massachusetts that recycled glass. And they closed. It was a family business and all the glass in New England was going there. And they would manufacture it, send it back out as raw material, and they just stopped and nobody picked up the ball on it. But, you know, overall, from a, from a revenue standpoint. I, you know, as you said, counselor, it's a loss. But in general, we are doing very, very well on the revenue side in comparison.
Yeah, I would just say, um, there's, I just got put on a, a state commission, it's the Extended Producer Responsibility Commission that I. I've mentioned it to um to Chris already. They're looking at a number of areas from. Paint, uh mattresses, batteries, electronics, and then the last one is packages, packaging and plastics. Um so, so I'm learning a lot there. We had a, I had my first meeting today, so I'll kind of keep you guys updated. But I've been chatting with Chris to learn more about impacts to the city on our budget. Answer residents can, you know, how this can either benefit or not benefit, so I'll keep you guys updated.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
D P W.
Later.
Okay, we got some smaller departments here. We gotta move through quickly. Next is Mayor's Office. I think I saw Bill outside.
It's all right.
Thank you, guys.
President checked himself, trying to read.
All right, I'm just trying to get out of here. Hey, Bill? All right, so we got the mayor's office, it's page one oh five in your book. Hopefully make this quick work for you, Bill. No changes in F T Es, one point two percent increase in the budget.
That's it. Mayor's Office budget is pretty bare bones and straightforward. As you said, maintains eight F T Es. Uh the reduction is three and a half percent on O T P S. Uh we maintain the staff and the leadership in uh. All city departments.
Thank you. Any questions for the mayor's office?
Thank you, Bill. I just saw one quick story.
If it's quick.
I got a, I got a parking permit from the mayor's office. When I switched cars a couple of months ago, and the parking permit, no one else has it. And I got a a ticket with the parking permit on the on the car. So I took it to Bill. I said, I I know the deal, and he had never seen the permit that I have. I have like the.
Sticker?
The sticker, yeah, it's the only one.
I got it.
Check it out.
Oh, I got it.
You got that star?
You follow the ru- star? No, mine's a square.
No, this is a star. It looks like a sunburst.
He's got the circle squ- uh star one. That's why I never saw it.
Oh, that's the O G. But that's not a parking permit. That's just your, there is a parking permit sticker. You're talking about just like that artsy-crafty, purple. That's, it's yellow and red. That's the.
Check it out, man.
Those aren't in production anymore, I don't think. All right. Any questions for Bill? Thank you to Mayor's Office. Thank you for sticking around with us. Appreciate it.
Men and ladies.
You were the quickest.
Next is City Council. With a wonderful clerk, thank you Gladys, page one, uh page eighty-one, no change in employees, reduction of three point two percent in budget.
Yes. And the reduction is under the advertising line. Which is something that we usually actually have access, or it does go back into the general fund. Um so that's the O T P S that we removed from there. The sixty-five hundred for the council. Uh seminars still in the budget. Some councils are taking advantage of it. I'm encouraging all counselors to use it. Um.
Educational.
Yes, the educational, five hundred dollars each.
If you really use it, that goes back into.
It goes back into the general.
Was back into free cash, which we we fight over giving back to the taxpayers. Okay, any questions for City Council budget?
No question, just a comment. Um. Um coming in as a new counselor, um. Your office has been great and you've been very supportive and helpful. I guess I'm just curious, I know we can't add anything to the budget, I'm not. But I I think at some point it'd be who was, you know, if, you know, down the road when we get new counselors. Um trainings, like actual new city council trainings when they come in. Um so that they know kind of the process. You kind of get thrown into the fire a little bit. And, you know, say, if you get like a twenty-minute meeting with Ken Shea.
Yeah.
And then that's kind of it.
Well, I'll give you a little bit of background on that, if I may. Uh when we, when.
When all of us came.
Said fifteen years ago, we had a really thorough seminar at um.
A place out by.
Emma Emma's Place off of Parker Street.
Five years ago.
That was, oh, that was sixteen years ago.
When I came in, they didn't.
Oh, they did it for you too? At Emma's Place? Oh, okay.
Spring for college?
No.
Um I was at Spring for college. It was great.
Oh, who ran it?
It was no, it was through Spring for College.
Was it other counselors there?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, was? The new counselor?
That was the team building thing we did.
Team building, yeah, but they also, they also took our town in here and TJ, we used to at the time, they gave us like a mini crash course on. City Council one-on-one.
And I used to do, I did, I think when you were first sworn in, I I did a seminar with uh Tanisha. And then subsequently with um Anthony, or previously with Anthony. I don't, and I did it with Gladys too, I think at least once or twice. Um but for whatever reason, I'm sorry, we never did it for the most recent group. I think cause I was. In a different role, but we can.
Just something I think, even if it's, even even for new counselors, even a refresher for current counselors. You you know, going over the rules and things like that. I just think it's something to to have our counselors, you know, that much, you know.
You know what we could do? Well, first of all, you're right, and we should do that for new counselors, which you are, but not, not so much. You got your seat legs now.
Same with you.
Brian. Well, Brian.
Brian, you're for twenty years.
Brian, Brian and who else?
Still act like it hasn't changed.
I think it's Brian. So what I would say is, why don't we, can we set up through the general, oh, I know why, cause I would used to be general government committee chair. That's when I used to do it. I'll do, I'll dust off those materials if you want, and if it's okay with you, Victor, we can have a committee meeting here. And for any counselors that are interested, new or old, I have a really good outline that talks about the charter powers, the forty, chapter forty powers. The forty-eight powers and just goes through the whole thing. It usually takes us about an hour.
I think it's beneficial, I I, you know, the state does it for all the new reps and senators every, every uh two years. Uh so just, just a thought.
Does that want to add anything to the budget?
If, yeah, if I may, I do have a special attention.
Oh, yeah. We got that, a whole section in there. Um also footnote, we ran into issues with people not participating. So thrilled that you wanna participate and we'll.
Yes.
Gladly do it. Counselor Walsh?
You're on mute.
I think that's a wonderful idea, because I think we need to make our meetings more professional and a review of 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 the rules. Uh would be very helpful. But I I basically had a question for for Gladys. Um I I know you have all the personnel you need, but what about? What about equipment? Do you have all the equipment that you need for this, for the city council?
I believe so, unless there's something that the counselors haven't communicated to me, the council staff is is good. And then all of the new um technology that we've received, we receive with focus. Um has been great. So I think we, as far as I'm concerned, we're good.
Well, I just didn't know, like, for example, how old the printer is, or if you need updates or things like that.
It's leased, right?
Pretty good. It's a color printer and we use it. We renew the lease every three years.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
Good night, Counselor Allen.
I know we constantly try to make our microphones better and stronger and all that, but Wednesday night, or what, within the last two days. People that were sitting in the back came to me after and said, I can't, couldn't hear a thing. Not counselors. People in the out, in the gallery kind of thing. The uh the policeman, for one, the policeman, it was a different guy than we normally have. I walked out the parking lot with him, he said, I couldn't hear a thing, basically. Um and um so just, he's just said the acoustics in there. You've had, you've said that in the past. I don't know if they got better.
They are bad. They did get much better. It is much better now, but and but every so often, someone forgets to turn their microphone on or things like that. But the acoustics, I think we're 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 the best place we can be considering the room and the acoustics. You're never gonna change that part.
But if it does start to slip back to what it's like, we'll talk to Focus and get.
We, I mean, I was.
Unworkable for six months. It was not a workable environment.
No, no, it's it's way better than that. It just, um.
Yeah.
All right, a quick question on the comment, Mr. President, uh with employee, thank you for your presentation. Uh this number here for the subcommittee meetings is that for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five?
It's yes, for twenty twenty-five.
So, so this plus whatever, a few more meetings including this one that are happening.
Correct. So it would be as of the time that that was printed.
So may I point out, Mr. President, that the city council has been very busy. Uh we had a total of hundred forty-one meetings so far. That works out to be about twelve meetings a month or three meetings a week. Uh and that just coming high, that we've been, we've been very busy. Yes, yes.
We're working.
We are, we're working.
Somewhere in there, there's an hourly wage we can calculate. A little minimum, maybe.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other city council comments? Okay, thank you, Gladys. Next is city clerk, also Gladys. Eight eighty-seven, no change in F T Es, five point four percent change in budget. Gladys?
Correct. So our point in, uh, Chris, our change in budget for the court's office is actually increased. As a full, it's gonna be, we did increase a couple lines, but we have an increase for software. Um and we're actually going to be kicking off at the end of this year, a brand-new uh software for. The council. So the new agenda and minutes, uh Civic Plus is starting, doing the trainings this past. Two months, uh a weekly uh meeting with the vendor. And it's actually gonna be a lot easier to use, a lot more workable for the staff and then for all of the different departments. Uh their training is gonna be in the beginning of June and then it's gonna just be, you know.
What's it gonna mean, what's it gonna mean to us?
It's going to be better use usability for the counselors from home, so that you can check the agendas a lot easier than you do now. Um the information that we get from it, we'll be able to pull some of the information that you requested a lot quicker. So uh attendance for the counselors and meetings.
Well, it happened to have capability, one thing that we used to have for a very short period of time, then we lost it. Was on the city's calendar, when you click on and you go into minute track and you get the uh populate, maybe it's not minute track. But whatever that calendar system is on the city's website, it'll show you the agenda, the agenda, full agenda, the minutes. And there used to be also a link for the video to the meeting.
Yes.
But now it's not there anymore. You gotta find it like in some YouTube.
Yes, so it'll have all of those.
It'll link it all together. That's terrific. That's a huge help.
So it's great. I mean, this one is over fifteen years old.
Terrific, horrific job.
So.
Terrific job.
If I may.
Yes.
So are you saying that that's gonna help with the minutes?
Yes. Yes.
That's why you looked.
It's because all of the counselors have their on offline concerns and some of the concerns that this new software is gonna address. Um speak to Counselor Allen's um wants and needs. A lot of it is Counselor Davil's wants and needs. And I think overall, all the counselors are gonna be pleased with it.
Terrific.
Well, I got more wants and needs.
Oh, one at a time.
Anything else? No judgment on any other prior clerks, but you're doing a terrific job. Thank you. We're talking about council meetings and city clerks. I do just wanna point out, we still have hybrid remote capabilities. It's been years since we've been able to have a voice vote um in the council. And I know that the counselors who are here and remote today understand this. But part of the reason why a lot of the meetings get bogged down so much and have been bogged down so much for the last five years is. We can't do a voice vote as long as there's one member participating remotely. And we have not had a meeting in, since COVID, where there wasn't at least one member participating remotely. So every vote, every referral to committee, every single thing is a roll call. And it used to be that more than fifty percent of the votes were voice votes, and it was rare that you had to do a roll call. You could just. Go through a lot of the agenda quick, and I can't do that anymore because as long as one person's remote, it has to be roll call. Okay. Thank you, city clerk. Word of election, one twenty-one in our book, no change in F. Word of election, one twenty one in our book, no change in FTEs. Reduction of nine point nine percent in the budget.
Yes, and the reduction, the majority of it comes from temporary salary reaching wages this year, it's going to be a local election year. Uh, so as a result, there are less requirements for the early voting. Um, so we were able to shave about fifty thousand dollars from that side of the budget, uh, we don't anticipate. You know, I don't wanna jinx myself, I don't believe in that, but we don't anticipate that there's going to be a primary, by the looks of it right now. Um, if there is, it may be in just one ward or one district of the city, which will also. Um, be cost savings on the line, but I haven't counted that um, into this. Uh, budget that we presented here, we also had a small decrease in professional services as well, because of the fact that it is not a state election year.
Thank you, any questions for elections, Counselor Davel?
Thank you, I'm sorry, I totally missed it, Madam Clerk, why is the uh, decrease in OTPS?
Uh, there is fifty thousand out of temporary salaries and wages. And then there is five thousand from personnel, professional services and dues and memberships, another hundred and fifty. So it's a uh, fifty one hundred from OTPS.
Yeah, because I'm looking at it, listening up to this one.
Because it's actually from personnel, not OTPS.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
So the majority of it is this fifty thousand. And that's from temporary salaries and wages. Which would be the poll worker pay.
Ah, that's exactly what's going.
Exactly.
All right, so what does that mean, so?
So that means. No, so that there would be less um, need for poll workers for that early voting period, we have two early voting periods during a state election year, which are two weeks mandatory.
Good.
And we don't have that for a local election year, we only have, we tend, the council would vote for one week.
So we expect that to come up to increase next year, then?
Yes, and and that's, and that's something I I would like to mention to the council, uh, the elections budget does fluctuate from year to year, so. The reduction you see this year may be an increase next year, but then a lot of that uh. Is returned to us and from the state as a member.
Uh, if you allow me, Mr. President, Madam Clerk, it's something that I uh, take this opportunity to. To advocate again, I know I said this before Kathy to you as well. Uh, one of the things that I take pride of is our election system. Um, I consider election day a holiday. I make it a point of visiting every single polling location in my ward. I make it a point of not only now that I'm city councillor, but kind of overseeing, watching what's going on. Uh, and I'm very impressed with the poll workers, I'm very impressed with the dedication. Uh, with the pride that they take, it's actually a social event to them. I'm also aware, Mr. President, that it's a whole day endeavor. Those guys get there, what, six o'clock in the morning? And they're there until what, eight, you know?
Eight thirty?
Eight thirty, sometimes nine o'clock. I think we increased their pay to one twenty five, I believe, if I'm not mistaken.
What are the benefits from that?
Uh, I believe it's one twenty five per day, one fifty?
No, one forty for the inspectors, one sixty for the clerks, and one eighty for the warden. Which is, it is low, you know, comparatively to other cities and towns outside.
Yeah, yeah, so without being said, I'm gonna say it again, I think we're doing the to the increase.
I agree.
Uh, I think that. I think this will be a good opportunity for this election. To open a little bit more, I don't know what that will look like for this year. Yeah, yeah, I'm looking at you, Kathy, uh, I I realize the budget is 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 done, well, it's not done, we haven't approved it yet, but um. Something that we need to look, because we, you know, it it's a long day for them, and you know, I think we need to be fair. Uh, to them, so I I, and I see that we have fifty thousand dollars, I don't know what that will look like, Kathy, that's your team to figure that out. And uh, and to you, Madam Clerk, uh, but again, uh, we should give them some sort of a pay raise, uh, they deserve.
Thank you, I agree without question, our poll workers, I say that without them, we couldn't have an election, so.
Absolutely, so.
I concur.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Davel, anybody else for elections? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Gladys.
Thank you.
Next is three one one. Come on down, three one one, page one forty one in your books. A level FTE, no changes, overall increase of two point eight percent. Good evening. Thanks for coming down.
Yeah, uh, Jason Garner, I've been the director of three one one for a year now.
Oh, welcome.
This is your first budget?
Uh, I did the council meeting last year, but this is my first full.
Yeah, I think I did at the very end, yeah. Oh, well, welcome, welcome, how's it going?
Good year.
Good. All right, so tell us a couple of things.
Yeah, so as you know, three one one's the main conduit between the city of Springfield and its citizens. Uh, our budget mostly contains uh, just salaries and our yearly. Contract for the software that we use, um, other than that, our biggest budget line would be postage. We mail out a lot of documents and information, uh, forms and such for citizens on behalf of the departments.
Thank you, Jason, any questions for three one one?
Uh, just how many calls? How many calls do you fill a year?
Um, right now, we don't have any metrics, we actually just got a new phone system, so we're still working on. Getting metrics up and running with that, so we can get statistics.
Well, I think the old metric says we're a hundred thousand a year, right?
Uh, I believe it was green seventy five thousand, a hundred thousand.
That's what they were using.
Per day, we get like four hundred calls a day.
So busy department?
Yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um.
You said four hundred?
Yeah.
I did, Monday to Friday.
Yeah.
Uh, Counselor, Counselor Allen?
Yeah, the um, I've heard about this new system, but I've heard about it from other people. Community meetings or whatever, to explain what it's gonna mean.
Yeah, so the the new system, the old one is very integrated, I believe it was about fifteen years old. So it was time for a change, it's just newer technology, um, it allows for a um. Like a menu, basically, for for people to choose where they need to go, um. It gives DPW, um, you know, city council. Uh, clerks, ordinance, like it it just basically breaks it down, so people.
Without interacting with a person, you can hit a button.
Correct, yeah, and it it will transfer them either to us for DPW and and tax related questions. Or they have the option to choose a department that handles calls directly.
So you might not get to a three one one operator for a while.
Correct, yeah, it kinda just sifts out those calls, um, keeps us less busy to. Take those calls that we would take care of.
Counselor Davel? Thank you, just one last question, Jason, um, the three one one app, I believe that there was talk that was gonna be revamped. Uh, or to be made user friendly, has that happened yet?
Um, I'm not sure of any like major updates to the app. Uh, I know I've been working with our our software developer, which is Intelgov. To kind of update it, um, get newer information on it, um, I've added a few different service categories. That would allow people to go onto the app and and submit a ticket online.
Very well, and so just to be, to be certain, my last question, uh, reporting street lights are when they, they are out. That's something that we can still call three one one, and you will guys will take the information, and pass it on to EverSource.
Yeah, so we'll we'll take the call, we'll answer it on EverSource's website, and then we track it through our.
The reason I ask, because I was mentioned, I was mentioned to me by a couple of people. That they were informed by three one one that they had to call directly to EverSource, and that wasn't my understanding.
No, no. The only time we refer someone to EverSource would be if they've already entered a ticket. And they wanna uh, get an update on their ticket, or um, a lot of times we get reports that. Uh, trees are touching wires, and that's not something that the forestry department would handle, so we can't put in a forestry ticket for that.
Who will handle that, the the company?
EverSource directly, the utility. Yeah, or.
Is that the same thing for private property, if the vegetation is touching cables in private property?
Uh, I'm not sure if they would handle anything on private property, because it is private property, um, but it it definitely would not be our forestry department.
Oh, no, so, yeah. Well, do do that, just.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Jason.
Counselor Delgado?
Uh, I was just reading here, between July twenty third through January twenty twenty fourth, they answer seventy three thousand. Calls. Um, so I had to, if I had to essay your four hundred days. You know, roughly over a hundred thousand calls a year. Um, so I wanna say like, you you guys are some hardworking people in there, um, especially when you're sitting there all day. Responding a bunch of happy calls. I can appreciate the work, that's, and then three one do, hopefully, you guys get to do some fun stuff, get up everyone. Once in a while, um, so yeah, I just wanted to throw that number out there, I don't, obviously, that's just me doing. Yeah. Math, so, I'm just thinking.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, Jason, just a couple of questions or points, we heard recently some testimony from a constituent who said that they were told by three one one, they couldn't. Pay for a second trash barrel. Um, you know.
According to the city ordinance, it says one barrel per dwelling.
No, you can have two, but you gotta pay for the second, so you gotta retrain people on that, if that's what you're telling them, because you can pay for a second barrel for sure.
The city ordinance still currently says one barrel per dwelling.
Well, we don't need to hash it out here, but that's not correct, so you can check with Chris. Um, and get that clarified, and then maybe get the the staff retrained on that. Um, and then that leads to my second point, which is what is this, what is the training for staff for onboarding them, because sometimes we do find that. You know, they get incorrect or misleading information from the operators.
Um, so our. Kind of training protocol is, it's kind of based like a two week training, we have on shadow on the phones. Uh, we read through the documents that the departments have provided us. Uh, we also go into the conference room and I show them all the various programs that we use, so it's kind of a a rotating.
So departments give you sort of like a, you know, things that they need to know about assessors and things they need to know about DPW?
Uh, yes, not as often as they should, uh, getting updates from departments is is pretty challenging.
Yeah.
Um, it's a lot of tail wagging the dog, where we have to go looking for it rather than it being told to us.
Yeah.
There's often times where we hear about things through the citizens instead of through the department or other internal.
Gladys, this rolls up to you now, right?
Yes, and we, I think when Jason started, that was one of the big things that we tried to implement with, which is. Refurbishing all the information that three one one had, because a lot of it was outdated, um, that went back all the way to when Donna was here. And it's the director of three one one, and it's. Probably one of the biggest hurdles that I would say that Jason has as a director is just to get the departments.
How can we get him, you know, some master document, like the equivalent of a good neighbor handbook, like internal to.
He's created.
So basically, what I've created when I started is a, I I call it a three one one quick reference uh, guide. It's a X plus spreadsheet that has uh, different sheets for every department. So basically, what the CSRs are able to do is do a control F search and say like, you know, city taxes, abatements. They can search and it'll pull up every instance of that word in that document, and they can go. Tab through it and find out what information we have.
And is that stuff quality reviewed by the applicable departments, or are you having trouble getting that feedback from them?
Yes.
Trouble getting that feedback, uh.
Yeah, I think we gotta, I I think you gotta get, somebody's gotta send top down, maybe from Bill Baker to everybody and say, this is what we gotta get.
Either that, or we can send the customer service back to the departments and they could take the phone calls, because part of the issue is these guys. That's not fair for these guys, they're expected to be the experts in every department, but yet they're they're kind of the catch up for the city, so. I'm an advocate for, you know, getting them more support, because I know how hard they work.
And they're the first ones to roll you, not you, but your department under the bus too, like, oh, three one one shouldn't be telling people they can't have, they can't have two barrels, well. I mean, they need to be told that that's what the, what the procedure is, so, okay.
Good point, I just have a quick follow up for me, uh, Jason, uh, regarding leader, uh.
You're good, huh?
Um, Moca, I believe is still operating. Moca?
Who Moca?
Moca, Moca, the uh.
The medic.
You mean Moca, are you talking about Roca? Mayor's Office of Cultural Affairs?
Park Department has a contract, they hire two.
Right, and so they call three one one, they report where the leader is, and Roca will go out. At some point, I'll pick it up.
Yeah, so.
Still the case.
Yeah, we take those calls, um, depending on where that report is, we'll either uh. Pass it on to Clean City, who maintains like city properties, tree builds, uh, the medians. Um, if it's on private property, we'll refer that to police ordinance, so they can go out and and investigate and cite it. Um, other times, if it's, it's in a public area, um, you know, we work hand in hand with Clean City, they'll say. We can pass this along to the personal program.
And the reason I bring it up, because I also feel there's some some complaints about, uh, I called three one one, they told me that Roca is no longer working, that. I'm not, not that I'm aware of, I thought we had a contract, so, um, okay, it's good to know, just to put it on the record that. Roca is still working, summer is coming, there's gonna be more later on the street, they can call, they will go out.
Yep, we'll take any complaint, log it, and pass it along to the appropriate department.
Thank you, Jason.
I'm sorry, I brought up one other example in my head, I also had a constituent call and say that three one one told them that they had to pay for twenty five percent of their sidewalk improvements. If they got put on a sidewalk list, and I know that that was the rule a long time ago, but going back to like the Albano administration. But it's definitely not the rule now, and um, I think that might be another example of a product of somebody like. Pulling up the form, like when you, when you fill out that form with the DPW office, and I talked to Chris about this, it still has on the bottom. A section that says, we reserve the right to charge you for twenty five percent of the cost of the. We haven't done it in thirty years, so I just made a new form for my constituents and I took it right off, and I said, Chris, this is what the new form looks like, and I said. So I don't know, I made it up, but they're accepting the form, and, well, it's not right, they shouldn't have to sign that, I wouldn't sign that if I was a property owner, I didn't wanna pay for it. So anyways, it's just another example of, um, the importance of getting, you know, a master list together and. Yeah, thanks for, thank you for all your work on that, okay, anything else for three one one Tim?
What is your history, were you in?
Well, I wanted to tout that a little bit, is because you were talking, you brought up the Good Neighbor Handbook, and Jason was an intern and came up under Kathy Brown. And so has a connection to Kathy, so he he really comes from that school of like. The Good Neighbor Handbook, public service, knowing all that, and even though he didn't initially start. In city government doing that, um, he really does that constituent service piece, so it makes sense when you talk for your stuff.
Yeah, um, so I I did work in a call center previously, uh, just doing inside sales, uh, so I have a background with that. Um, but as for uh, starting here, I first started in the city in the election office. As a attempt for the twenty twenty election, um, from there, I went to the treasurer's office, I was the administrative assistant there. Until I moved up to the senior treasury analyst, which was basically managing the money and and moving it around, funding. New checks and, um, and then from there, I left to go to uh, DYS for a few months, uh. To be an accountant over there, and then this opportunity came up and and Gladys called me about it.
Yeah, thank you.
Let's.
Happy to have you. Good. So how can we help you to get them trained, to get them the support from the departments?
Part of, and I'll wrap all of, all of these little tidbits, and part of what Jason and I have spoken about is something that. You're working on, and there's gonna be a general government meeting on, which is.
Jones, really?
Which is what?
The skills base.
The skill based hiring, I think right now the uh, three one one operators have to have a bachelor's degree in order to have a job there.
I don't think.
And I think we have so many candidates that.
Totally.
No, and it's a foot in the door for people who have a bachelor's degree, they don't last long, it's a year turnaround, so to get people trained. On the breadth of information that they need to know in order to have the job, and then within the year, they're off to another department, we've had, yeah, they. We have some in finance, they go on over to the city. Exactly, but if we, you know, the skills based hiring would be very helpful, because I know that we've had people who apply that just. Even internally that are part of the union, they just don't have a bachelor's degree. And um, it it would be a stepping stone, it'd be a great office for people who internally know their departments, there are no A department. To move up, because it's a kind of salary.
Uh, Mr. President, I think this is not the first time that I hear what Madam Clerk has just said, it appears to me that there's an active fight to the death among departments. In um, scourging for the very limited amount of of talent.
You put it quite that way. You might be going a little farther than how she put it, but yeah.
Those are my words, no, I think Madam Clerk, but uh, it's not the first time that I've heard this, uh, and maybe this is more like a. But uh uh it's not the first time that I've heard this, uh and maybe this is more like a solister question, but I wonder. Uh, if it's even possible to, for the city to create some sort of a policy of limiting transfers. You know, because it, you know, I know it's a very, who I'm looking for, loaded question, but cheaper than the point. You know, you're bringing people, you trade them, in the year they're gone to we we're in pastures. Now we gotta start all over again from scratch. I'm just putting that on the table. It's not the first time that I hear that concern from various departments. And I'm starting to get a little concerned as to what the hell kind of fights going on that, you know, uh, so anyways, um. Thank you.
Last question, is there a button that you can press that sends all the calls to the departments?
No, alright.
The clerk's office, the elections office, and the city council office all proudly insert own phone calls each and not go to three one one.
The other departments don't have their numbers on the website. You go seven, three, nine, one, three, one, 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 whatever.
So we can change those numbers if they don't respond to.
That's what we'll do. Their number on the web, we'll put Chris's number right on the. Next is I T. Hi, George or Andy or somebody. Alright, we got three departments left. We're at almost a half hour, so let's try and get get this done in the next ten minutes. Hi, Andy, hi, George. Okay, so their department is in page one eighty nine. A reduction of two FTEs and an increase overall in the budget to four percent. Mister Doty.
So, yeah, we we um we had some positions that we were gonna try to fill with children from kids, um. You know, is uh out of out of high school, giving them kind of an entry level job that they could do, so we uh, we unfortunately gave up those those positions.
You still have some.
We we do, for interns only, but what we wanna do is give them a path to get in at a junior level. So, yeah, so that's unfortunately uh, we had to give up. Um, the increases, of course, contractual obligations, you know, the software is five percent year over year. Units being the heavy hitter, so that really does uh put a pretty good sized dent in the software budget.
Thank you. Questions for I T? Counselor Dowling?
Uh, yes, uh, Andy, um, so what you're able to say publicly, uh, or. I T audits. Uh, are we budgeted well for continue to the the security of the uh. I T system. So I remember you went in the past talking concerns about this.
Yeah, so I T audits are handled by internal audit. They fund the the I T audits. We welcome them. They're they're a perfect opportunity to have somebody come in and have an outside look, give us, you know, some some guideline, you know, guidelines.
Also come on with security audits.
Yes, yes, we have security audits. Internal audit uh does perform every other year, does perform a audit on the I T department. We have just recently had one. Last year, I believe, um, so, yeah, we we routinely have I T audits performed by internal audit, Young and his his group owner.
Okay, so I do remember you talking that if we get hijacked, so-called hijack, uh, it's very costly to the city.
So, yes, we we really don't comment on the infrastructure for for obvious reasons, but um, yes, we do go with the routine audits. Um, we self audit a lot of times, you know, we do perform our own testing in-house, so we're right on the, right on the ball with that.
But are you pretty comfortable in telling us that on that aspect? Alright, thank you. Don't give me some.
I do have a question for you, Andy. Um, communication is one of the biggest things that we get from constituents in terms of. Information and knowledge from from the city. I know the city website got recognized before, but it is very hard to navigate now, and I'm wondering at some point. Is there a moment that we can update the website?
We just updated it. So this this, the one that you're seeing there now is about, I think, three or four years old. Um, that was spearheaded by a group member between Denise Jordan and ourselves to to modify the website and and bring it current. I wanna say the one thing that that is, you you know, we we do get, some people say, hey, it's great. Some people say it's very difficult to navigate. It's a very fine line to be able to walk, having it be super easy and not being able to find the information ver- versus being a little bit more difficult, being able to find the information. There's, there's information on our website that goes all the way back to the control board days. So we have not deleted any of that information. Anybody at any time can go on the city website, search the website using the search option. And find information going back years and years and years. So, yes, it's it's probably a little more. Technical, um, but we, you know, we publish a lot more information than a lot of cities in town do on our website.
Yeah, cuz that was one of my things is is like, I even last year, I think during last year's uh budget, like. I was trying to get a digital copy before I got sent a digital copy and I had to go like searching around cuz it wasn't, so I don't know if it's the, it's the the different departments. You know, are in control of how they display things, you know, um, so there could be a little bit of that, um, but it's definitely something that like, you know. For me, it's like, I wanna a nice, easy website that functions to navigate. And I know it's easier said than done cuz of uh uh as much information you put on there. So that's why I just, I just bring it up. So I appreciate the recent update, um, but wanna make sure that we continue to like try to fine tune it.
On the, on the website, I saw you just changed the calendar. It's much better now, cuz it used to have that like uh. On the, on the homepage on the right. Used to be on the homepage on the top right. It used to have the links to like what the current meetings are of the day. If you go to SpringfieldCityHall.com.
That's Minute Track. They they changed it.
Oh, well, it's much better now. And our website, by the way, looks really, it's better than it's ever looked. City Council's website is updated and professional. Brian's still gotta get a photo if he's here, but everybody else, everybody else's stuff looks really good. Okay, anything else for I T? Thank you, Andy. Thank you, George. You stickin' with us. Okay. I saw Amanda and Tim, so planning, please. Planning is page two oh five in your books, number one in your hearts, and it is a. Good, how are you? Three increase in F T E, eleven point six percent increase overall. We're in a good mood tonight. Give it time. Alright, Tim, so, planning.
Let's start with the increase. Okay, so uh the budget represents an increase of a hundred and sixty two thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars. That's primarily related to the transfer of the zoning code enforcement folks coming over to O P E D. Uh, and out of the building department, so the building department budget goes flat with those positions, so it's really a break even. The reason uh for the transfer is ultimately, we wanted. Virtually a hundred percent of the work that's done in the zoning code enforcement and with the zoning board of appeals. Is all work that's stemming stemming from the planning department. So. Not having them with the planning department and separate really doesn't make a lot of sense. And secondly, um. We wanted to have more integration with the zoning folks with economic development as well. And the third piece uh uh around the reasoning uh for moving them over to O P E D. Was basically getting more interaction with the uh Department of Neighborhoods. And direct interaction with the neighborhood councils. Um, I think most council council members hear quite a bit about concerns relative to zoning code enforcement. And I think there needs to ultimately be a direct accountability that takes it from O P E D all the way down to the neighborhoods. Um, so that is the reason for the uh increase in terms of the budget and the full-time equivalents. Um, you'll also notice there was a forty seven thousand seven eighty four deduction. Uh, that's primarily for a salary account, um, the salary account for funding that was not deployed. Uh, and there's two thousand dollars out of uh travel and training.
Great. Any questions for O P E D? Counselor Dowling?
Thank you, um, Mister President. How you doing, Tim? Hello. Tim, so if I understand you correctly, you saying that the increase of seventeen point four is because the zoning. Code enforcement staff will be coming with.
It's coming under, well, if the. Code enforcement in general is under the position of community development director. As part of the uh uh legislation that basically. Uh, got rid of the control board and brought the city back uh under general government. So i- in terms of that, there's specific departments that my position actually oversees.
So is that, my understanding is there's two different, there is residential's code enforcement and then there is business. Or coming under you or just.
No, ju- just the zoning code uh and the the zoning board of appeals. So the zoning administrator would come under O P E D as well as the two inspectors. And we would be taking the responsibility in terms of staffing the uh zoning board of appeals.
But I think I said, to be clear, for the residential, so, residential inspectors.
No, no, the it, the the zoning code is basically dealing with residential and commercial issues. Because they're doing zoning compliance.
So they'll be coming on you?
Yes.
Okay, and how many, how many people, two?
There's two inspectors and then there's the zoning administrator, so it's three. And then uh there, there is a position that it uh a clerical position. We did not. Take that out of the building department budget, uh. Because there were some complications with that relative to the union position.
So Tim, doing my due diligence, so I see the total increase one sixty four. Um, one hundred sixty four thousand by fifteen.
Yes.
So that's probably just three people's salary plus.
That's correct.
Plus cola, right? Where would I see that reduction?
In the the building department's budget that Steve is gonna.
Page two nineteen.
You'll see the negative three positions, but the money doesn't wash because there were raises and there were some increases for. Building inspectors during the year, but Steve can talk to that, but if you're looking to see the exact wash, you're not. That would be nice, but it.
Oh, you guys see some people, well, you can take it up that side.
I tried to take it, trust me.
Thank you. Take a tale.
So Kathy, I'm sorry, stepped out for a sec. The thirteen point nine, the famous fifteen positions.
These two are washed, these aren't counted on.
But as we've been talking to all these different departments, those thirteen point nine are spread into each of those departments.
Yes, there's a list um in your budget book that shows all of the increases and decreases that come down to thirteen point nine. I don't have pages on here, so I can't tell you what pages, but it's in there that shows each department, whether plus or minus, and they'll show you the plus three and minus three.
So, Tim, when you talked about the three people in zoning, just put names on that. Mike Jacob is the zoning.
He's the zoning administrator, and then there's two inspectors underneath them. Those positions will be coming over.
You know their names?
Uh, I don't off the top of my head.
Just wonder if I hear about them, okay.
Yeah, I mean zoning is taking care of things like, you know, there's a fence, that's not to be, where it's supposed to be code, which remained under Steve is gonna handle. You know, there's an unsafe structure, somebody's complaining about code violation, a tenant complaining about a code violation inside the house, that's the difference.
It's a budget. Not a budget issue, but there's one house right by my brother's street, right? It's just perennial, just endless. We've had Mike out there, it's endless. If you take a left off the bridge and go about two hundred yards, you'll see it. We can't hardly see it. They have like nine cars and.
Yeah, I I mean, there's all types of things like that.
Just the one of the one that just goes on.
I mean, there's, there's another example. I mean, there's so many commercial trucks that are now parking in neighborhoods. Driveways, um, or even on sidewalks.
Right.
I mean, those are issues that, you know, degrade the quality of the neighborhood, so.
Alright, any other questions for O P E D Office of Economic Development? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is. Building and housing code. Steve, hi.
Good evening, counselors. Can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Can you hear me now?
Pages two nineteen and two twenty seven in the book, and as we just talked about. Code shows a reduction of three employees and housing code shows a reduction number one.
Yeah, uh, Steve, that's us, Code Enforcement Commissioner. Uh, I run the building division, housing division. Um, as Tim has spoke about, we are looking at a reduction of three full-time employees as the zoning administrator and as two inspectors moving over to. Uh, the planning department. Um, they're looking at trying to build a little bit better synergy between how planning works and along with zoning and the neighborhoods as as Tim was talking about. Um, part of our highlights for our budget. I think we're pretty level funded budget. There's only a two point nine increase. Uh, the budget does include. The funding to allow the building inspectors to keep up to a forty hour work week to stay on top of uh. The amount of construction that we do have going on in the city and the and the large increases of construction, like, you know, uh, just one big construction site alone. Uh, or the Eastfield Mall is that, that's take, gonna take up a lot of time and a lot of inspectors. The reduction of the three full-time employees, we spoke about that. Uh, the level funding for OT P S, that includes all our contractual obligations. Which includes the cost of uniforms, safety supplies, uh, safety equipment. Also includes the training cost for the inspectors and their uh educational. On all the current code enforcement statutes and and like with the building inspectors, the plum inspectors, we're rolling into all new brand, brand new building codes, so. There's consistently inspectors go to a training at least once a month to keep up with their training. And education on the new codes, they they have to achieve up to forty two. Uh, C E U's every two years, so there's a lot of training that consistently goes on that uh we pay for out in our budget that's required by. Uh, the union contract. Uh, one of our big highlights this year is, counselor knows, we've. Moved forward with a new permitting system called Open Gov. Uh, this is going to make the permitting process now. Online, online payments. This has been a long time coming. We're finally gonna be able to do this with Open Gov. This should help us a lot with probably anywhere from seventy percent to eighty percent of our permits that are basic permits that people now build. Apply online. Receive their permits online and make their payments online. Uh, so this, this will help us a lot with the continuing workload that. Uh, that, you know, the building department is faced with every time, especially every time a new code book comes out and. They're gonna do a reduction in, uh, you know, streamline the building codes. It ends up twice the size and we we end up with a a larger workload every time. Our budget is uh two point, little over two million, two million eight hundred eighty nine thousand five hundred ninety four dollars. Um, housing budget is one million four hundred twelve thousand one hundred fourteen. With the housing code, we have six full F T Es, uh, fully funded positions. We do have one vacancy on the housing division side, still we're trying to, uh, fill, but all our positions are funded. The OT P S is basically the same thing as the building department. It's it's the contractual obligations for clothing, safety equipment. Any of the allowances for the bargaining unit. Um, we still have the funding in there that's gonna continue to major, uh, the mayor's clean city program. Uh, we have continued funding from the C D B G program for our homelessness prevention through its receivership program. And also the ongoing enforcement for our. Our Saturday sweeps with the inspectors when they go all through the neighborhoods, canvas streets and look for proactive workers, lighted homes. Legal businesses, as Tim and somebody mentioned that, just the fact that only tractor trailers sometimes are being parked in the neighborhoods or parked on private properties. The guys that have a lot of junk cars or, uh, you know, those type of auto body businesses that are operating out of houses. This Saturday is a good time where we pick up a lot of these quality of life issues that affect us that we we just can't keep up with during the week. One thing I'd like to, well, I'd like to mention that you you guys did work with uh in the last budget on giving raises to the clerks cuz we were losing so many clerks. And it was affecting us on a constant rollover, so that the small raise that was given to them was very effective. I think we, it was about thirty five or forty thousand dollars. Um, that has turned around and just to show it, that it's probably, probably issued almost little over five hundred thousand dollars in tickets alone this year by keeping those positions and keeping them filled. So that, that raise. Uh, you can look at the amount of revenue that has raised, that is raised just from, you know, like, keep people in our seat and have, uh, a well-trained staff there. Um, I'm happy to say that we haven't lost one clerk since then, and I've got probably one of the best crews I've had in probably fifteen years.
Alright, that's terrific. Alright, any questions for Steve on building our housing code?
I have a quick question, a quick question. So. You lost, so am I right? You consumed a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars worth? Was that an even swap from, from here?
Yeah, we're basically taking out of my budget that would have funded the zoning administrator and the two inspectors and everything's just sliding over and up into Tim's budget.
In your building code, you can see down below the, the variance for full-time equivalent. He's, he goes down three, I go up three.
No, I was just wondering because, so you consumed, uh, those three positions, I'm assuming that's the hundred and sixty-four increase, right? But he still went up sixty thousand dollars, so technically in my head, you went up a hundred and sixty-four plus the sixty thousand dollars.
Well, I mean, codes, building code would have gone up much more if they had those positions. What, that, that shows it only went up three percent, but we. We gave, um, there were union raises which were two percent, two percent, for that was five. We also gave raises to the clerk to keep them. We gave raises to, additional raises to the building inspectors because Steve was unable to keep building inspectors, so we actually, um. They work with the, uh, the, um, union and we did increase the, um, pay scale of the building inspector, so that's why you're not gonna see the exact match.
Yeah.
His would have gone up much more, um, and the one.
Not done the transfer, it would have been much more. That, that's what I'm trying to solve.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So when we say like, only a two point nine, I'm like, no, it's technically more.
Yeah, it would have been a much more, but we, he was, Steve was losing staff. I mean, we joked, um, that he's a training center for all the, um.
Surrounding.
Surrounding communities. He trains them and everyone hires them and they go, so. We did work on a big reorg and do give them money and, and, and it's, like he said, it's working, you know, it's working.
I just wanted to make sure.
It wasn't, it wasn't a ton of money, but it was, you know, it, it was enough, and we had to do something because that department's so.
I, I, I agree with you guys. I mean, there's a lot of good work there and important work there, so I just wanted to, from my conscience, I'm like, it's not really two point nine.
Oh, no.
Yeah, okay.
It looks good at two point.
And I, that's what I'm saying. These are good, they, they tell good stories, right? When I'm really, you know, when you really dig down, so. No, I mean, Steve, your team has a lot of work out there. I mean, you guys have, I guess, you're understaffed. If, if I hear correct when we go to the community meetings, right, and so, um, the fact that you're able to get your folk reasons to stay, um, you know. And so Victor, Councilor Dowell has a point, then, in terms of not just internal, but also external and, and, you know, I guess every department faces that, so. Um, so I just wanna clarify that, but. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Dowell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Steve, good to see you. I have to say that I, I, I seen you guys doing the Saturday sweep, and I love them. Uh, the yield good result and, uh, they'll be proactively, uh, keeping our neighborhood, your neighborhoods, uh, pristine and, and livable. If we don't want them to, uh, to go to a hell and a heap, was it hen baskets, is that what they say? Uh, with that being said, Steve, I just wanna clarify a question. Um. The permits, the utility permits, the electrical, the plumbing. Uh, for the A D Us, they remain the same, correct? As if it was any other. Uh, uh, construction, right?
Yes, uh, ba- basically, if, if you kind of look like the state kind of wiped out residency across the whole, whole state. Anybody can turn basically a single-family house into an A D U as long as they meet the regulations. That said, it's still, there's no difference in the, in the permit, our costs are not gonna. Uh, permit costs are not gonna be any different. They're gonna pay the same cost as, just as everybody else would when it comes to the value of the construction. Um. The permit fees and applications will be the same.
Right, right, okay. Alright, just so, that, that's what I thought before, just wanted to make sure that I heard that correctly. Uh, I know there hasn't been a lot of interesting A D Us as of yet. Uh, but, uh, something that we're keeping an eye, cuz not only is it revenue, but also to ensure that the construction meets standard. Uh, so, uh, thank you, Steve. Thank you for.
Yeah, I mean, we, we are, we do have, uh, a couple vacancies there, but, uh, the raises have made a difference. Uh, I haven't really lost anybody since then. Uh, I have a very good crew there. I mean. Having two vacancies right now is still, still tough, uh, and we have one plumbing vacancy, but, and one housing vacancy, but we're in a lot better shape this year than we were. Uh, previous years, uh, so, and, and it does reflect on our revenue and, and along with our main mission of public safety. Um. Hope- hopefully this year we can get the two vacancies on the building inspectors, uh, filled. Cuz they do, you know, building inspector, they do bring in a lot more revenue than that, than the cost of city.
Is it a three point, uh, three million dollars? Correct?
I'm sorry?
Three million dollars for permitting, I think that's what you guys brought in.
Um. Yeah, it's, it's actually, yeah, it's actually, it's actually a little over that. I mean, if you look at adding in tickets and the, the eventual, like I say, this year. We've issued so far, I believe, over five hundred thousand dollars alone in tickets. The, that is revenue that will be brought in later down the road when actually people don't pay the tickets. It does get leaned to the tax. Bill of the property and lean to their property if they eventually don't pay.
Right, I, I like revenue, so thank you for that, uh, Steve.
Thank you, Councilor Dowell, Councilor Allen.
Just one question, Steve, on, on, I think you mentioned Springfield Crossing. Any estimate on like a development like that, what the revenue might be on permits and stuff, or how much time that takes from you guys?
Um. The good thing about a project like that, I mean, we did, we bring in a lot of revenue. I don't know exactly, we still have a lot more permits coming in, but. The good thing about a project like that, having a inspector, having all his work concentrated on one area. So he may go there for maybe looking at Target, his next inspection may be right there looking at Chick-fil-A or one of the other ones going on, so. The, the efficiency of having inspectors in one area or having an inspector that's assigned to a project like that makes a big difference. Um. Sometimes it, 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 it can take more time for a building inspector dealing with a homeowner on his own homeowner project than it will be dealing with a, a. A large box that, that does very well or professionally run.
But the permitting revenue will be significant.
Alright, I'm all set.
Thank you, Councilor Walsh.
President, uh, and Steve, you've waited, you've waited a long time for us to get to you, but, you know, I have, I have a question about personnel because. Your department generates revenue, and I'm wondering if you have enough people or if there's some other positions that need to be created. To bring in more revenue for your department. I know you and I have talked about this before.
Yep. Right now, because we have, uh, our, all our fun, positions are funded right now, our biggest hurdle is just filling the positions. So with the raises, that, that's made a big help, but, you know, um, one of our biggest hurdles. Was getting the money back up there, but we still have the problem of trying to deal with the residency issue because a lot of these. Positions are very specialized, building inspectors. It's a problem right across the state and there's a lot of competitions between towns, so. Even bringing the money up, we're still at a loss compared to a lot of other communities when it comes to attracting a building inspector for bringing them from one community to the next because of the residency issue. Um, I have worked with the mayor and the council. We've added a couple variances that helped us get some of the building inspectors that we have. Now they would not have been able to get, so. Uh. But that, that, that is just one hurdle that we're still dealing with.
So in other words, you're comfortable with the, the, the number of employees that you have? You don't feel the need to create any different kind of position to help bring in more revenue?
No, I don't think so. I, um, it's just a matter of filling the position that we have now and the budget of vacancies.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you for asking.
Thanks for waiting. Well, you know, w- we have to support your department because of all the revenue that you bring in. You need to be fully staffed, and I know that in the past it's been an issue, but I'm glad to hear it's not anymore.
Yeah, I mean, we will be looking at the fees. There's a lot of our fees haven't been raised, I believe, since. I started back with the control board and worked with them on raising the fees. Some of our fees are automatically raised every year, our major fees of the construction permits for large. Permits, I had set that years ago to follow and track the R S means, so. Every year that automatically clicks with the value of construction and the cost of materials. Uh, some of our other ancillary fees were, whether it's a roofing permit or some of the plumbing, plumbing permits and stuff. Uh, I believe now we're starting to fall behind some of the other communities, so as soon as we're up with OpenGov and we get that up and running and we can work the bugs out, we're gonna look at. Coming back to council and presenting, uh, a whole new fee schedule.
Okay, look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you.
Hey. Thank you, Councilor Walsh. Any, uh, final questions for code? Thank you, Steve. That is the last item on our agenda. That will conclude our final budget hearing and our fourth budget meeting. Our budget vote is scheduled for a week from yesterday. Tuesday, the twenty-seventh at five o'clock. It's the day after Memorial Day. See you all then. Thank you.
Thank you.